PM, November the ninth, 2020, I called the Saluda County Council to order at this time. I'd ask Councilman Daniels to lead us in a word of prayer at this moment.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come at another appointed hour of the day. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us this far. And Heavenly Father, we thank you for these great leaders here tonight. And Father, all that we accomplish, we do it in your honor. It's not about us, but we do it in your honor. Strengthen us, Father. Fill us up where we are down. Guide us and direct us for the betterment of Saluda County. In Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you. Gentlemen, you have before you the agenda for this evening. The chair at this time will entertain a motion to accept the agenda. It is not necessary for a second. Does the chair hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is approved. You also have in your package the minutes of the October the 12th and October 19th. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of those two meetings. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
By Councilman Rice. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Questions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. Minutes are approved. This time we'll have reports from the council members. Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to give a shout out to the volunteer firemen. When they are sponsoring these benefits to raise some money, please go out and support your fire department in your area. So big help.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Daniels. Councilman Rice?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Butler?
Well, in relation to what Mr. Daniels said, we just had a supper this weekend. We appreciate everybody's supporting it.
Thank you, sir. At this time, under the chairman's report, I have a letter here from Jason Price, who is chairman of the Saluda County Soil and Water Conservation District. And he asked me if I would share this with the council and the public. And at this time, I will read this letter. This is to the Saluda County Council. Dear Chairman Strawbridge and all Saluda County Council members, I am pleased to report to you that the Saluda County Soil and Water Conservation District had another outstanding year. Our fiscal year ended on September 30, and we have learned that Saluda County, being the 39th in county size, has placed and obligated the fourth most environmental quality incentive program contracts for the county in our state. Those other three counties in order are Orangeburg, which is second in size, Chesterfield, 11th in size, and Aiken, which is fourth in size. Those three counties combined are 6.6 times the size and 15 times the population of Saluda. I believe when we get through doing the math, that only per acre, per capita basis, Saluda County will again top the chart like we have done the last number of consecutive years. The EQIP contracts that the Saluda County Soil and Water Conservation District placed in the last fiscal year represent an income of $1,935,452 that will be used to help conserve our natural resources. Those funds will be matched by cost sharing from the recipients to make it an even greater impact on our economy. There was $35,142,000 available in South Carolina for an average of $763,000 per county. We pulled in two and a half times that amount. Your Saluda County Soil and Water Conservation District operates one of the most understaffed offices in the state. It relies on a combination of federal, state, county, and affiliate member funds to function. I know of no other program that puts more bang for the buck back on the ground for you. I am immensely proud of our staff for the job they do, and I would be remiss if not to give them my thanks. I also want to say a big thank you to the Saluda County Council for your continued support. Every county conservation district operates at the mercy of their respective county. As the federal and state funds would not be received if the local district did not have local support. This would not be possible without you. Thanks again. Respectfully submitted, Jason Price, chairman. Jason Price and the Soil and Water Conservation District are doing a fine job, gentlemen. Any comments or questions about the letter from the Water District?
Thank you for the information, Chairman. But I'm not, I'm, I know as well as myself, I know a lot of people are not aware exactly just what's taking place with that. But there are, there's some fine individuals from our county who's taking care of our environment.
I agree. The chair agrees with that. Any other comments from any council? There's no, there are no other reports that the chair has at this time. So we'll get into the next order of business, which are two public hearings. The first public hearing is on ordinance number 0820, ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement binding between Saluda County, South Carolina, and Mason Solar LLC, a company previously identified as Project Mason, acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors, collectively called the company, pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county. The benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project, and three, certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project and other matters relating thereto. At this time, the public hearing is now in order. There has been no one that has signed up to speak to this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience of the council chambers that would like to address this public hearing? There being no one, the public hearing is closed. The second public hearing, ordinance number 0920, ordinance authorizing and approving first, the establishment of a joint county industrial and business park pursuant to section 4-1-170 of the South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976, as amended, to be known as the Saluda County Project Mason Joint County Industrial and Business Park in conjunction with Edgefield County. Such park to be geographically located in Saluda County. The execution and delivery of a written park agreement with Edgefield County as to the requirement of payments in fee, of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to park payments, in respect to park property, and the sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park. And third, to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park within Saluda County and other matters related thereto. At this time, the public hearing is open, and no one has signed up to speak to that public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this ordinance? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. This is the third reading of ordinance 0720. An ordinance to amend the code of ordinance of Saluda County, South Carolina, Chapter 2, Administration. Article 2 of the county council, Division 2 Rules of Parliamentary Procedures, Sections 2-55.1 through 2-70. At this particular time, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the third reading of ordinance 0720, which concerns the parliamentary procedures as have been presented to you in the previously, previous two meetings. Is there a motion for this?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Daniels. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Butler. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the parliamentary procedure, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Parliamentary procedure ordinance is approved. This is the second reading of ordinance 0820. Second reading on ordinance 0820, an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement binding between Saluda County, South Carolina, and Mason Solar LLC, a company previously identified as Project Mason, acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors, pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county. Second, the benefit of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project. Certain special source revenue credits in connection with, connection with the project and other matters relating thereto. Is there a motion to accept the second reading of this ordinance?
Motion.
By Councilman Rice. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Daniel. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Second reading is approved. This is the second reading of ordinance 0920. An ordinance authorizing and approving the establishment of a joint county industrial and business park pursuant to section 4-1-170 of the South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976, as amended, to be known as the Saluda County Project Mason Joint County Industrial and Business Park in conjunction with Edgefield County. Such park to be geographically located in Saluda County. The execution and delivery of a written park ad valorem taxes with respect to park payments, in respect to park property, and the sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park. Third, to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park within Saluda County and/or other matters related thereto. This is the second reading of ordinance 920. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the second reading.
So moved.
By Councilman Daniel. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Grace. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, the second reading of 0920 is approved.
I didn't call for a vote.
Chair will entertain a motion to vote on the second reading.
Huh? Just call for the vote.
I've already got the motion. Feel like I've been reading the dictionary. Excuse me. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I'm glad I got the clerk to the council to keep me straight. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to make the public and the council aware of a resolution that was presented to Billy R. Corley, who spent 21 years of service to Saluda County, and he has now retired. Resolution was given to him in the proper manner, and he began his employment in the Roads and Bridges Department as an equipment operator. He became the superintendent of the Roads and Bridges Department. And now, instead of detention, he gets his pension. So I would like to share that with the council and the public. If you'd like to see a copy of that. Under new business, first order of business, ma'am? I'm sorry. Thank you, ma'am. That's, that's why you're sitting there. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the ratification of the resolution for Billy Corley. Is there a motion?
Motion.
By Councilman Grace. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Daniel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It's approved. Now, under new business, our CPA who has done the audit, Dr. David Enzance. I'm going to figure out how to say your name, David, if you, if you would present your findings to the council, please.
Located Lexington, South Carolina. So I'm here to go over the audits and financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2020. If you turn into your audit reports, on pages three and four are the actual independent auditor's report. So this is the report we issue. It's an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can give. I mean, there were any material modifications or changes or anything that needed to be noted for the financials that are provided by management. This is the same opinion we've given for the past, past few years. Moving on into the financial statements. If you turn to page six, this is a statement of net position. This is a balance sheet. So this is a combined balance sheet with all the different funds and activities. So it's called the governmental activities. So you can see there cash was at 9.2 million. This schedule, this balance sheet does show capital assets, land, buildings, and equipment. Then it also has the liabilities of the county. It has the other post-employment benefits obligation of 4.5 million is owed. And then the net pension liability of 12.2 million is owed. And then you can see down that the net position at the bottom is a deficit of 2.1 million due to the due post-retirement benefits and the retirement pension obligation. Moving on to page seven, this is a statement of activities. This is an income statement. Again, it's a consolidated statement. This one differs from the ones that, that comes in the next pages in that it shows depreciation. It has a charge for pension expense, and it has a charge for retiree health insurance, which make the results different than the ones in the back. And there's a schedule that reconciles it on page eight. But you start in that left-hand column. You can see expenses for the year are 17.2 million. You work your way across to the right, and you work your way down. So there was a change in net position, a decrease of 369,000 for the year. Page nine is a combined balance sheet of all the different funds. The general fund is the main operating fund for the county. That's in that first column. So you can see cash investments were at 2.5 million, and total fund balance in general fund was at 2.2 million. Moving on to page 10, this is the income statement for all the different funds. Again, that first column, you have the general fund. Then you have the C funds, which is for, for construction of roads and maintenance of roads. Debt services to pay the GO bonds outstanding. And then capital projects is for any projects, the county funds. And then special revenue is the different state and federal grants that the county receives. But if you look in that first column, in the general fund, revenues were at 13.5 million. Expenses were at 13.6. For the year, the general fund balance increased 414,000, going from 1.8 million up to 2.2. Page 11 shows a budget and actual. Revenues came in over budget by 713,000. Expenses came in under budget for a positive variance of 369,000. And the results of those positive variances were the increase into the general fund of 415,000. Pages 13 through 32 are the footnotes to the financial statements. And these are pretty much the same from year to year. One of the footnotes we point out is on page 21. That shows the general obligation bond outstanding. So currently, the county has one bond outstanding. On page 21, it shows the years of the maturities into 2021, 2022, and 2023, and then the bond will be paid off. On page 25, there's a discussion in a footnote about other post-employment benefits. So the county offers retiree health insurance to its retirees when they have enough years of service. Page 25 shows the actuarial calculations for the last five years. And so the actuaries compute the cost of 311,000 each year, whereas the actual cost in that second column is 62,000. And so each year, there's a difference between the actuary calculation and the actual. And that 28 discusses the pension plan. So the county participates in the state retirement system for regular government employees and for also for the police officers. So at the top of page 28, it lists a pension liability, which is the county share of the pension liability from the state retirement system. So it has 8.2 for regular government employees, and then 3.9 for a police officer's retirement. Page 34 is a 10-year projection of, of, of the cost of the retiree health insurance. Page 35 is, is a six-year comparison of the pension liability for state retirement system. And then starting on page 38 is the, is the general fund detail. And that goes all the way through page 63, and that shows all the detail for each of the individual funds. So at the end of the, of the, of the report, there's a, a report from me again. It shows that there were no internal control problems, no problems noted. It's a nice, clean audit report. Y'all have any questions at this time?
One question I have. The fiscal assets that we have of the county has an appreciation. What pages?
So that's shown on page 20. So on page 19, it summarizes the totals of the different assets you have.
Okay.
And then page, page 20 shows how it's broken out between the different departments that you might have.
So our accumulated depreciation has increased about a million dollars, not quite a million dollars.
Depreciation on assets is 714,566. Yes, sir. And that's an, that's a, that's a non-cash charge.
Yes. That's, that's not cash we've lost. That's just...
Yeah. The majority of it comes from the buildings that are depreciated over a longer period of time.
Absolutely. Councilman Daniel, you have any questions of Enzistak?
Mr. David, as usual, you do a good job on the audit.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Grace?
Thank you, sir, for explaining it to us in kind of our simple layman terms. I could, I actually could actually follow through on this because some of this stuff is so confusing, it's hard to keep up with. But you did present it in such a manner that we could actually understand it.
Yes, sir. If you have any questions, let me know. We'll be glad to answer them.
Councilman Butler, you have any questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
David, thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Be careful growing back in that dark of Lexington. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the audited financial statements for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 as presented by Enzistak Enzine. I'm going to get that right one day, David. I apologize to you. David Enzizaga. Is there a motion?
Motion.
By Councilman Daniel, second by?
Second.
Councilman Grace. Any, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion's carried. At this time, I'll recognize the Fire Service Coordinator, Josh Morton, for consideration to issue a request for proposal for annual physicals for Fire Service and EMS personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we provide annually a physical for our firefighters and EMS personnel. We've done this for many years, a lot longer than I've been here. And basically, every so often, as our contract runs out, it's, it's just time to put that out for bid again. So we're just asking for, for permission to put that back out for bid this year. So I'll entertain any questions that you have.
At this time, the chair would ask the council for a motion to, for Josh to follow through with the proposal for annual physicals for the Fire Service and EMS personnel made by Councilman...
Can I ask a question first?
Let's get the motion and then question. Is there a motion? By Councilman Butler, second by?
I'll second.
Councilman Grace. Any discussion?
What kind of participation do we have on Fire Service?
Between Fire and EMS, we had, and I don't have the exact number for this year, but it was around average. So we averaged 90 to 95 per year.
And we're paying for that? Do we pay for a certain number?
So our minimum in the current contract is 90. So if we have 80, we still have to pay for 90. But we, we have hit that number every year. You know, we've, we've come close to it sometimes. But, but we do, do generally make our number. Yes, sir.
How many bids do we normally, do we send out for them, or do they normally just receive them?
So we put it out for, for bid through the South Carolina Business Opportunities as well as, you know, other means. Generally, we average about three to four companies that bid on it each, each time. Yes, sir. And we bid it out no longer than five years. Everything that my office does, we bid out at least every five years. With the physicals, I believe the current contract was for three years. And then we ended up extending it one year because due to COVID, it was just not a good year to try to make a switch. So we're actually, we, we had the option to extend that contract by one year, which we did just due to the COVID situation. So...
So we're presently under a contract now for one...
Our contract ended with the physicals that we just did.
Okay.
So, yes, sir.
Councilman Daniel, you have anything?
No, sir.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion is over. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Josh. Now, our EMS director, Jacob Starnes, has a little presentation and some education on something that's coming up. I would encourage the council at this time to pay very close attention because this is an opportunity for some of our high school students and the public to get something very valuable to them. Thank you for being here, Jacob.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Counsel, I'm just trying to go through a project we started back in March. Saluda EMS, Piedmont Technical College, Saluda High School. We all got together trying to figure out a way that we could utilize the Piedmont Tech in Saluda County. We got together and we were going to start the EMT program. Well, of course, COVID hit. We kind of put that on the back burner. Well, we got back into it, and now getting everything set up. The way it had to go is this class will be free to anybody in the public in Saluda County. This program is also going to be dual enrolled into school. And just like there's fire classes at Batesburg, we're getting with the school system and seeing if... And just like there's fire classes at Batesburg, we're getting with the school system and seeing if anybody from Batesburg wants to take the EMS program. So Sluta High School sends students to Batesburg for fire. Batesburg can also send students to Sluta for EMS. And what this ended up doing is when they graduate, they will actually be certified EMTs in the state of South Carolina. And they can start working, going into the workforce straight out of high school. Now, on the backside of that, with it being dual enrolled and credited, they can also carry those credits from EMT program into the paramedic program, into the nursing program at Piedmont Tech, all the way up to the nurse practitioner program.
Up to nurse practitioner?
Yes, sir.
At no cost?
At no cost to them. And the reason they did is when we got into this, the EMS Association, Cyclone EMS Association, had gotten with the state government and got EMS as a critical need job. And they got funding through all of that, and everything is going on. We're trying to start in January. And the dual enrollment will start in the spring. Now, on the backside of this, all of this cannot have been possible because once we figured out everything with this, we understood that by the state of South Carolina, we had to have some kind of, we had to have a certain training items. And the biggest thing was three mannequins. So then we had to pump because the mannequins were anywhere from a hundred thousand to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So that is when I got to give many thanks to the Charlie Foundation, where they came into and partnered with Piedmont Tech and us and generously donated the money for the mannequin for this program to even proceed.
Just for juniors and seniors at the high school?
Yes, sir.
Now, the high schools certainly in their guidance program have, they can go to their guidance counselors and those people involved with the school. How does the public get involved and sign up for this?
On Piedmont Tech's website, I'm pretty sure, I don't want to quote them, but their classes are put online. I'm gonna actually post off on Sluta County EMS's Facebook. I can get with other people and just try to get, spread a word out through different social medias and probably even put it into the paper too that we're having this class go.
If we put this particular program on the county's website, get the information on there. I think this is an extraordinary opportunity for, certainly for the young students going to the school. But for the general public, it's pretty doggone good too, because this is something that is not costing them or the county anything that's being done. And I think a lot of the instruction is being done by your department. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I think this is phenomenal that we've got something like this in front of us.
And another thing too is it takes a high school student straight out of high school that can, the next day, go to work and start anywhere from, there's different private services, county service could start out anywhere from twenty-five to forty thousand dollar job the next day out of high school.
Absolutely. Now, I want to ask you one question. The first step of the training is EMT.
Yes, sir.
And the second is paramedic.
Second is advanced. There's three stages. Yes, sir. There's the EMT, advanced EMT, and then paramedic.
And then paramedic.
Yes, sir.
There's three phases there. And then nurse practitioner. Is that right?
RN, nurse, registered nurse.
Actually, an RN?
Yes, sir.
Pretty strong, ladies and gentlemen. That's...
Not to speak on Piedmont's part, but Piedmont is also looking at a bridge program from paramedic to nurse, to registered nurse. That would be kind of a fast track program.
Excuse me for talking too much. Councilman Daniel, do you have some questions?
I think this is a great program for the citizens of Sluta and surrounding areas. My hat's off to Piedmont Tech, but we especially think the Charlie Foundation.
Yes, sir.
For their funds.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Grace.
I'd like to add, Chairman, that I think it'd be really strongly on our part to make sure we get this information out to the public. We need to really, I'd say push this, but we need to promote this in any way possible we can because this is a vital resource and a vital need for our county as well.
Absolutely.
And for our young people as well to get and be involved.
Councilman Butler, is this high school only or is it taking tech students as well?
Tech students as well. Yes, sir. It'll be open to everybody.
Twenty-one-year-old, a twenty-two-year-old?
Yes, sir. An eighty-year-old could...
Eighty-year-old.
Yes, sir.
You almost did that, didn't you?
Yes, sir. And then one thing I didn't mean to mention is this is also costing the county not a single dime. It is completely funded through Piedmont Tech, the Charlie Foundation. And also Piedmont Tech is going to let us use their room for our training, for EMS training and anything that we need to use for.
Do I recall a conversation with you where you said the Charlie Foundation has already expensed about a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. Around a hundred and seven.
About a hundred and some thousand dollars already.
Yes.
Fabulous program, Jacob. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any more questions from the council? Thank you for your presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Jacob, most encouraging for the county. At this time, at this particular time, ladies and gentlemen, the chair will entertain a motion to appoint to the Employee Grievance Committee, Demetrius Moore, Angie Saxon, and Jill Warren, with terms expiring November the tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Does the chair hear a motion? By Councilman Butler, is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Daniels. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Those three are appointed to the Employee Grievance Committee. At this time, the council may go into executive session pursuant to section thirty-four dash seventy-A, one and two of the Code of the South Carolina Code of Laws, nineteen seventy-six, as amended to discuss personnel in the Roads and Bridges Department and to receive legal advice. Seven minutes. Does the chair hear a motion to go into executive session? It does not need a second.
Motion.
Is, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We're in executive session. Thank you. We'll be back in just a few minutes. Thank you very much. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to come out of executive session and... and to open session. Is there a motion?
No move.
Aye.
All approved, no. We're out of executive session and into open session. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to offer the position of Roads and Bridges Superintendent to Ben Ward effective November the thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
By Councilman Daniel, second.
Second.
By Councilman Rice. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion is approved to offer the position of Roads and Bridges to Ben Ward. Very good. It's time the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. It does not require a second.
Motion.
By Councilman Rice. All in favor say aye.